All right, I've got five ones, we'll call the meeting to order here. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna deviate here a little bit and looking for a motion to approve the vice mayor for tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to name Matt Bokey as the vice mayor for this meeting.
I would prefer that the motion states the presiding officer as the vice mayor.
Care to amend your motion?
Yeah.
To what he said?
To what he said, yes.
All right, first and second?
Your right.
Okay, any discussion on that? Kelsey, are we good?
Make that motion? And do a second?
Okay. All right. We'll see what we have on the books. Sorry. We got it. Acting vice mayor. You good with that?
I am fine.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving down to the agendas, with the regular agendas presented in front of you, any questions or would take a motion for that? Motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item 2B, the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen or so requests, in which the event these items will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately. Is there anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I would move to remove item 11A2.
Thank you. So noted. Thank you. Any others? If not, it would entertain a motion. So moved.
I need to add this one.
Okay.
A gambling permit for the BFW, for the Boys and Girls Club. Kelsey, do you wanna?
Yeah, Mayor Kelsey, I think we'll just add that to our liquor and gambling item.
Right.
If you want to add it to the consent agenda, that'll be a discussion.
Aaron, can you handle that then when that comes up, please? Thank you. Add that to it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of what is item 11A2.
Thank you. Motion and a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda was one item removed.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting held January 10, 2023, and a special city council meeting held January 26, 2023.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
First and second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We're gonna move the agenda around a little bit tonight to address some concerns here. I'd like to move to item 6B. Dan, if you'd like to take that one, please?
Sure, item 6B, we heard some testimony yesterday at the Public Works meeting from Ross Hanson. He'd like to present parking permits around the high school. And, you wanna?
Thank you. Ross, you care to present us?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so basically, my name is Ross Hanson, I'm a junior at Detroit Lakes High School. For those who haven't introduced myself to already. At the high school, ever since that add-on with the new referendum and everything went through, parking has been a big issue, would just not have as much space. So I gave, I wrote up a proposal over the past couple of weeks, I put a lot of hours into it, and I presented it to the Public Works Committee yesterday. But there were a couple of issues that I wasn't aware of until I actually came here to the Public Works meeting, which was yesterday, in which I figured out some things. So, first of all, I just wanted to claim that I didn't do this as a school project or anything, this was something I did on my own time, because it was, it's a big problem and I, something needs to be done about it. And it was, it was something that I wanted to take in my own hands to help out my school and my classmates. So yesterday, after the meeting, we came to the conclusion that we were gonna try, it was labeled a district issue, and we were going to try to talk to Mark Jensen, the superintendent, or some other higher-up leader within the school district. I tried to hunt down Mark Jensen this morning, I couldn't find him, he was running around schools doing some other stuff, but I was able to sit down with Josh O'Mang, the principal of Detroit Lakes High School, for about a half an hour. And I just asked him, we just talked about things that we could do within the district to open up some more parking for the students specifically. So I suggested what our city engineer was talking about yesterday, which was opening that parking lot on the east side of the school up to students and then opening the doors. With that, it just comes a safety issue with just, you know, all kinds of traffic coming in that door, with, you know, you need to be able to have an eye on who's coming in and who's coming out of the building, if that makes sense. So, he said really the only option at this point is to move the, either move the tennis courts farther to the south and extend the parking lot, which we have now, or find some other way to, on the school land, provide some more parking for students. The biggest thing that I wasn't aware of was the residents posing a big concern to how this was done with closing the streets. You know, about three years ago, we had the referendum go through to add-on to the school. We voted to have a bigger building with a bigger gym to support less people, or, excuse me, to support more people with the bigger facility, but that also came with less parking. So, you know, street parking, if we could do something about that to open it, it would be a big help in, in the supporting of our, the growth of our school and the growth of our community, things like that. Other schools located in residential areas such as U and Hitterdale Public Schools, Holly Public Schools, even colleges in the cities, I have a sibling who attends a college in the cities in a residential area, and they are allowed to park on the streets and in front of residential houses. So, that's my question, is just why can't we do that here in Detroit Lakes as well, but with also practical safety parameters to ensure the safety when you are entering the next parking lot with all the congestion that happens on that road before and after school? And you know, even, even, we don't even need to park on the side streets, even if most of Roosevelt was just open and maybe that south side, that Parkview Street there, to the south of those, or to the southwest of the school, that would help very much. The, the next thing I want to address is just a plan to go about this, because this issue is just gonna keep getting worse, for us students anyway. I will find Jensen sometime within the next couple of weeks and I'll sit down and talk with him about this. I know Mr. Clem said he was gonna do the same thing yesterday at the end of yesterday's meeting about that. And we were gonna try to find another solution within, that we could do within the district to fix what, the issues we've been having. But we're just, we're, we're kinda running out of options here. And so, I'd like to get a resolution or a plan to do something about this within a month, by the next meeting. With that, going as far as going with the city, or, excuse me, going with the district first to try to find a resolution within the district and then going to try to find a solution with the city if it has to go that far, which I hope it doesn't, but we're just, we're kinda on short shrins here. So, yeah, that's pretty much the meat and potatoes of it, I just wanted to clear that up. I know everybody who wasn't at the Public Works meeting yesterday has probably kinda lost as to exactly what I did or what I'm talking about. I do have a handout of what I presented yesterday, if anybody is interested in that. And, yeah, that, that pretty much sums it up. Does anybody have any questions for me or anything that I can answer about the subject?
Questions for Mr. Hanson? If not, thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any follow-up?
No, I think, you know, I'm, Chairman of the Public Works Committee isn't here this evening, but I think this is something that, whether it's a resolution through the school district or through the city, I think should go through the normal channels, where the Planning Commission, Public Works, and municipal city council, so we don't have any action on the agenda tonight, so that's, we're, we have to go back to the committee and see what the chairman wants to do.
Thank you very much. Without further objection, let's move to 7B. Dan, that's Finance Committee, so if you can take that one as well, please?
All right, item 7B, we have Deb here from Ortel Architects, would you wanna come up and kinda cover what we're gonna be discussing?
Great.
Hi, I'm Deb Randwick with Ortel Architects, I was the project manager for the Public Works facility design. Thank you. As you know, last month, we received general contractor bids for the project, we received 12 general contractor bids. The low base bid was BCI Construction at just over 9.5 million. As part of the project, we also included four deduct alternates, just hedging our bets on the bidding climate. And we also included one add alternate that was to enclose the final corner of the building to create some additional, enclosed heated vehicle storage space that would allow the full Public Works department, including the Parks Department, to all come together. The first deduct alternate is a covered storage, kinda a lead-to type of structure that is in that corner. So if you choose to select that add alternate for that interior space, you would also take that deduct alternate number one. So with the base bid, deduct alternate one, add alternate number five, the total construction cost would be 9.95 million. Then I have for you all the memo of the total project cost summary to the best estimate to date. On there, we have the assumption of the 9.95 million construction cost, and then including the soft cost fees of design fees of the masquerading project that already happened, soils report, that have been low voltage, which the city does have a hard bid for, special inspections, which we also have a hard bid for. And then a couple of items that are still in estimate form, furniture, portable generator, the building does have a switch, a connection point for a future generator to be purchased. So if that can be purchased as part of the project, there's a spot for that. Some shelving and portable lifts, column lifts for the vehicle maintenance area. That the grand total of the project at the bottom of the sheet, there's just over 11.4 million with just under 10.9 million outstanding. Any questions on those numbers or more explanation of the bids?
Questions of Deb on the bids at all?
Take them here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is consideration to accepting the bids for the Public Works facility and awarding the contract to BCI Construction Group for a total price of, is that 9.95 million? Finance Committee reviewed this this afternoon, recommending verbal and I so move.
All right, we've got a first for consideration to accepting the bids for Public Works and awarding the contract. We have a second.
Second?
All right, any discussion on that?
Was that for the 9.95 or the total project cost? We'd have to award the bid. I'm following.
And the other stuff is, the other items?
That's correct, the action items are awarded bid.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I think that's everything moving around, is there anybody here for the public forum? Yes? If you can state your name and address, Todd, when you come up here, please?
Active Mayor Bokey, or, active Mayor Bokey and members of the council, I just wanna thank you for giving me time to speak this evening, it kinda looked like when I got here I wasn't gonna get to you, so I'm kinda thankful that I got to get up here anyway. My name is Todd Simison, I've been in Detroit Lakes for 41 years. I've owned a company called TS Dock and Lift for 23 years within the city. We started out on Pelican Lake and moved to the city about 23 years ago. I recently went through a building expansion project on my property and have some concerns that I'd like to address with all of you. Generally speaking, the city has treated us absolutely wonderful. Priscilla has came out and visited us through our, our application process. She has spent time with us measuring our property, helping us out. I'd have to say the same thing for Nate Weber. We've done a lot of our own construction on our project, and Nate has been out there to show us what's right, what's wrong, what's gonna fly with building code and what's not. Right down to the person that answers the phone, Mark at the front desk has been absolutely wonderful to us, and I'd have to say the same thing for the city's street department. When our pipes are thawed, you know, when our, when our pipes are frozen in the winter or we need salt brought into our parking lot, the city department is, is, in my book, second to none, they're awesome to us. I really attended this meeting to talk about how difficult it was to work with the community development director throughout our process. Process of our application to our, our building. Not only is it my opinion, but I've talked to a lot of people in town, several other business owners that have the same problem that what we've had, what we went through, and potential business owners that wanted to own businesses in our community, but gave up on the process on the way through. I wanna be really clear, especially with my meeting before our meeting tonight, I wanna be very clear that I do feel that the community development director, Larry Remen, is a good person. I don't know throughout the process if I offended Larry, or if somehow we have a personality conflict between the two of us, or what the circumstances are between Larry and I. But I, or we at TS Dock and Lift had a very, very difficult time getting our permit for what I would call a very small addition to our existing facility at 1682 Highway 10 East. I guess I'm concerned if other people who want to invest in our city have to go through the same process as what we did. We might lose investors or people that wanna start new businesses in our community. I do know this for sure, if I would've had to go through all of this same thing when I started my business 28 years ago, I probably would've been broke before I started my business. It was, some of the things that I went through are just unforgivable. I did, I wanna start off by saying I did meet with the community development director in my initial visit to the city office when we requested the application. At this same time, we had a brief meeting and were told that things looked pretty darn good on the sketch, but that we had to go online and fill out an application just like everyone else. We filled out the paperwork, and I would say within about 10 minutes of filling out the paperwork, we got a call from the city, Larry, saying that it's a definite denial for our application based on impervious surface. Larry told our store manager, she's right here, Nick Schoens, Larry told our store manager to rent a measuring wheel and calculate our green space, which we did, and were immediately told that we were indeed wrong with our measurements, or we were possibly stretching the truth with our measurements. I guess my big question would be, if he knew the answer to that question, if he knew what our measurements were by his GPS or whatever he has, why didn't he just come out and say, "These are your measurements"? But no, he had us measure, get a measuring wheel, measure our property, come back with our measurements, and then tell us we were wrong. So, after this point, we were told by Larry that we should hire Meadowland Surveying at around $12,000 to help us figure out our green space. In my book, that's a lot of money, 12 grand just to know how much green space we have out there. Then later, we were told that maybe we could hire an engineering firm to come up with a drainage plan to the tune of about $15,000. And the $15,000 did not include any work, it only included the plan. So if the plan was 15 grand, you could only imagine how much the actual work would be. We later found out that Larry had somehow not informed us that we could also measure the size of our ponds, the depths of our ponds, and even the grass between us and the road right away, as this, all these items would be in our favor. After doing all this work, only then did we find out that because we were an established business, that we would be grandfathered in at the old calculations or the old laws. And with remeasuring, including ditches and ponds, we are now qualified for our permits. On the date that we did finally obtain our permits, hallelujah, I was very glad that we did, we were also told that we could not store bolt lifts on our green space, and that Larry would more than likely make a personal visit to our location to determine any green space violation. Okay, so I just briefly went online and I put impervious surface and what it's defined as, and it's defined as asphalt, concrete, brick, and stone that eliminate rainwater infiltration and natural groundwater recharge. So clearly, looking at their definition, I don't, I don't feel that a bolt lift is going to be an impervious surface. Does not meet the definition of impervious surface. Also, I feel that telling us that we're gonna be closely watched was somewhat a threat. Remember, our business addition is only 1,800 square feet, and we have lots of space around us for water runoff. And just so you know, the building addition was to house three new employees that all would make over $25 an hour. So I guess the big question in my mind, are we treating people equally in the city? There are many, many businesses in this town where their lots are covered with concrete or asphalt with very, very little drainage, even some new ones that we permitted. Is this what we want, is this what we want as the gateway to our community? Is this, is this what we want when they walk in to get, get a permit at Detroit Lakes? Maybe we need another type of plan, what our neighboring, like what our neighboring cities have. They seem to be growing rapidly with some really neat new businesses. In conclusion, and I mean this, I love this city and I'm blessed to live here and work here. I just feel that we can do better and treat business people and new businesses in a way that is much better than what we do. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Simmons, we appreciate it.
Yep, we'll bring that up. Anybody else with the open forum that would like to address the council?
Can I, can I just comment? I think, I wanna thank Todd because it takes a lot of courage to get up there and speak the truth about what he's went through, 'cause I've heard this from other business owners in town, that the issues that's been going out there, I've driven by Detroit Lake and, what is it, 28% or 25% impervious is the guideline, because there are homes on that lake that I don't know how the heck they're getting approved because they're half the size of the lot. And I would encourage all city council members to go to Simmons' business and see the little shit that he put down and all the money he had to pay just to get that accomplished. That's all I ask.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other open forum, we'll move back to the regular agenda. Dan, with community development, if you would? Sorry, that's my turn, I'm sorry. We'll be the last to say.
So item A for the community development committee is consideration to a resolution approving a variance to allow an addition to a home. And I will ask Sean to kinda fill us in a little bit about this before we...
Sounds good. We reviewed this at the planning commission and then at the community development committee. Essentially, what's happening here is the existing structure that'll be demolished, a new addition will be added. The setback is, is approximately the same between both facilities, and overall, a reduction of impervious surface from 44% to 40.3%. So definitely moving in the right direction. It won't change the character of the lot in any way, so the planning commission and the community development committee both recommend approval.
I would make the motion to approve that Wesley.
First and second? To approve the consideration of a resolution approving the variance to allow addition to home at 1080 Wesley Drive. Any further discussion?
I guess I would just like to point out for, for everyone, 'cause I had a little bit of confusion on this yesterday, this property had been grandfathered in, and that is the basis for which you're using those percentages. And that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other comments or discussion? If not, I will call it. Anybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, item, item B is a consideration to a resolution approving in the matter of annexing an area designated for orderly annexation. The area to which we're referring is on Randolph Road and County Highway 54, and I would just ask Kelsey to kinda summarize that for us.
Sure, Vice Mayor and Council, five years ago, we entered into an orderly annexation agreement with Lakeview Township. What kind of led to this was rebuilding of Randolph Road. We had some discussions with Lakeview about cost sharing of Randolph Road, and it kind of got to the discussion of, well, that's an area that's probably gonna be annexed in eventually anyways, so while we enter into an orderly annexation agreement, and then basically the township definitely contributed to the cost of the project. Along with that was basically a five-year deferral. We held out on actually doing the annexation for five years unless so petitioned. And actually, part of that did happen, there was two parcels, the homestead and farm step that's on the corner, petitioned to be annexed in almost like a year afterwards when we're doing Randolph Road project to need a water and sewer, so that's already annexed in. This would be the remaining parcel, which is a 50-acre parcel that connects everything from Randolph Road up over the hill and then touches a part of County Highway 54.
Thank you. Our committee discussed this yesterday, and I would move to approve, approve the annexation of the area designated in the resolution.
Second. All right, we have a first and second consideration, the resolution approving the, in the matter of annexing, orderly annexation of Randolph Road and County Highway 54. Any discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, one of you?
Nothing, I would say this is it.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to public works now, yeah?
All right, I'll take a step, please. Item A was just a discussion regarding parking on the north end of Washington Square Mall Parking Lot, no action, we don't want to talk about that at all.
Vice Mayor and Council, Sean, do you have any update on that? You declared a slight emergency, have cars move us on, any update?
Vice Mayor and Council, yes, we declared a small emergency to have them vehicles removed and by nine o'clock this morning, so we could clean that parking lot. At nine o'clock, we pulled in there, there was five vehicles still there, so we did, towed them out of there, and we got the parking lot cleaned. And we did send the residents that do park there, we did send them the ordinance for a 48-hour parking, our ordinance for parking lot being moved every 48 hours, so they are aware of that now.
Okay, no action, we just, our normal processes, just a discussion yesterday, and that's all we have on that. Item C is consideration to approving a 20-mile speed zone in school zones. Sean, you want to give us a recap of where we are doing 20 mile an hour speed zones?
Vice Mayor and Council, right now, around Rossman School on Willow Street is 20 miles an hour, but on Rossman it's 15. Around Roosevelt, it is already 20, so we're just going to make it consistent, so all school zones are at 20 mile an hour. We're carrying one standard sign. If something gets hit, we're able to get that back up. And then we're also going to make sure on the lily old signs right below it that say, when flashing or when children are present, those are accurate.
With that, the Public Works Committee reviewed that and recommends approval, I so move second.
First and second to approving the consideration, approving the 20 mile an hour speed limit in the zones noted by Public Works Director King. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Item D is consideration to a resolution authorizing the grant submission for Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Program Grant. We talked about the stock down by the pavilion area for handicap accessibility, the American Legion, the DAB, a few other groups have donated money, this is additional funds to make that happen. The exact location is still up in the air, but is generally in that area down on the beach. Did I cover that all correctly? Perfect. So Public Works Committee reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
First and second to consideration of resolution authorizing the grant submission for DNR Outdoor Rec Program. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, I will hand this over to the city engineer to give us a brief synopsis of this piece here.
Vice Mayor and Council, I think it is included in your packet a copy of the preliminary engineering report for the 2023 street rehabilitation report. This is a project that we cycle into the capital improvement plan, I'd say every four or five years somewhere in that neighborhood, and it's sort of a placeholder project targeted at, strictly at pavement rehabilitation, pavement improvement, so not full reconstructions, curb gutter sidewalk utilities, strictly looking at the pavement surface. Public Works Department and our office work pretty closely at trying to identify a list of candidate streets that would be good for this type of work, which is primarily full depth reclamation or millon overlay type projects. When we got sort of through our exercise, we had a list of streets that probably would have cost in the order of about $5.5 million. We obviously didn't have the budget for that, so we tried to pare that down a little bit more for a project that we could carry forward this summer. And so when we did that, we ended up with a project that would be right around $2 million, mostly focused on full-depth reclamation projects. So that process is grinding all the existing pavement and some of the underlying gravel up together, trimming it off and putting in a full, full pavement surface on those streets. I would point out that in the report, and we sort of just identified it as deferred but recommended improvements to the remaining streets, which would be about another $3 to $3.5 million, and these are streets that were better candidates for millon overlay. Contrast being there, millon overlay streets generally have a shorter window that we can hit them with a millon overlay before they no longer are good candidates, they deteriorate too far, and at that point, doing an overlay on them is just throwing good money after bad. So the point being on that, at some point in the next year or two, maybe three at the outside, we would need to be looking at some of these additional streets to get overlay on them, or we simply have to just defer them, ride them out, and let them continue to deteriorate with a full-depth reclamation later on. So the report recommends, like I said, about $2 million full-depth reclamation project. The streets that are included primarily include 11th between 8th and 34, so going up alongside the middle school, Randolph Road from Roosevelt to Chris Street, 15th, which is over by Wassa and Forum, and then White Clover Beach, which is a sort of a low-volume dead-end road off of Charlotte Drive. Those are the primary streets that we're looking at for this year. So the action tonight would be to adopt the report, and we'll be setting a public hearing for next month. We notify all the property owners, project committee, all special assessments, we notify the owners, have a hearing next month, talk in more detail what's going on. Any questions?
Can you remind me what the, I worked on a couple of them, especially Randolph Road and a couple spots, the city has quite a bit of liability along there?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. So the assessment policy, just in broad nature, on a full-depth reclamation requires a 50-50 cost split between the city and the adjacent property owner. So simplest form, 50% of the cost is assessed to the landlord, 50% is picked up by the city. However, the city also assumes all of the costs for adjacent property that can't be assessed, either there's just nothing there to assess, it's undevelopable, or it's wetland, or it's city-owned property, and we have all of those somewhere amongst all of these streets. I mean Randolph Road, for example, effectively, we have one side that can assess. 15th, there's wetlands involved. Same is true, there's a couple of spots on 11th as well. So point being, when all that math is done, we're actually looking at a total cost to the city on the order of about a million and a half, a little over a million, a little over $500,000 being assessed. So it ends up shaping out to be about a three-quarters city share, one-quarter property owner share.
Okay, so this is consideration to a resolution approving the preliminary engineering report and setting a public hearing for the proposed 2023 street rehabilitation project. Public Works reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move second.
First and second for the consideration of resolution approving the PER and setting a public hearing for the proposed 2023 street rehabilitation project. Any comments or discussion?
I would just like to call out, we talked about this a little yesterday as well, you know, the deferred improvements, that roughly $3.5 million, you know, I think it's the right thing to not do that right now, let's get these really bad streets done, but I think we need to review that soon and think about our future capital spending, because those projects will become a lot more money if we don't do something with them, and we have a very limited window.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item F is consideration to accepting the city engineer's monthly project status report.
I believe we're saying it's all in your packet, just kind of call that.
It's all in your packet, and if you've got any questions for John, go ahead and ask them.
Are you glad Wesley grabbed his dog?
Yeah, started that in a couple months.
We have a motion to approve the consideration to accepting the engineer's report.
I'll make that motion.
First and second, any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Dan?
Not at this committee, but the very next one, I've got something else.
You know, if you'd care to go to the finance committee, Dan, that'd be great.
Perfect. Item A of the finance committee is consideration to accepting the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center annual financial statements and the independent accountants' audit report for the year ending August 31st, 2022. Finance Committee heard a report from Peter Jacobson at the finance committee meeting, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second to consider the, to accepting the DLCCC annual financial report that's included in your packet, any discussion or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We did item B. Item C is consideration to a resolution for ARPA funds for early care and development of Becker County. Kelsey, would you want to go into this a little bit?
Sure. Vice Mayor and Council, there is some information in your packet about the early care and development fund of Becker County. This is kind of a product of a couple of years of work on the childcare issue. They presented to Detroit Lakes Development Authority earlier this month. Basically, what they're doing is trying to raise about $150,000 to get this foundation started. They're seeking a $10,000 contribution from the city of Detroit Lakes. The suggestion I made at the development authority meeting is that the ARPA dollars, our American Rescue Plan Act dollars, we received during the pandemic. We had a line item that we were kind of placeholder for childcare of $10,000 for possible funding, either pigging back in on the county's grant program and what have you. We still have that placeholder, we still have that line item, that $10,000, so the staff recommendation was if the council would be so willing to use that $10,000 that we have appropriated to give to this foundation, which then they can turn, basically divvy out grants as they get applications.
Finance Committee reviewed this, heard presentation, recommends approval, and I so move to donate $10,000 ARPA funds to the early childcare and development of Becker County.
Second.
First and second to consideration to a request for ARPA funds to the early care and development of Becker County. Any discussion?
Vice Mayor, if I could add one thing, they would like to see someone from the city serve on their advisory committee, so whether it's a member or development authority member, so if you're interested, let me or the mayor know and get you appointed.
Thank you, good point. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is consideration to approving Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Arena Use Agreement. The finance committee reviewed the proposals for the agreement, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a first and a second to approve the consideration of Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Arena Use Agreement. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is consideration to approving the Detroit Lakes Public School Arena Use Agreement. Again, the finance committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
First and second to consider approving the Detroit Lakes Public School Arena Use Agreement. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Dan, for finance?
It's all in good.
Thank you. Moving down to item A, public safety.
Thank you. Item A is just an informational piece, the township contract meeting relative to the fire department, will be held on February 23rd, 2023, 3:00 PM at the Fire Hall. Just sharing a bit of information, I don't think there's anything else I need to add. Item B, Chief Todd brought to us a joint powers agreement with the Lakes Area SWAT, and provided us with some background and some benefits and costs, and I think it probably best to ask him to maybe come and talk a little bit about what the SWAT, the joint powers agreement, and our committee discussed it, and we're not asking for any resolution, but maybe just some action that's supporting his idea.
Green means go, all right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few months ago, we were approached by what's called Lakes Area SWAT team, which is Hubbard and Wadena Counties, and they extended invitations to Becker County Sheriff Lander, as well as myself with the police department in Detroit Lakes. And this is something that Sheriff Lander and I have been talking about for years, but we just don't have enough personnel in our two agencies to maintain our own team in this area. So this felt like a realistic opportunity that could come to fruition, and we spoke extensively yesterday on some of the benefits of having officers trained in this, but some of those real quick benefits would just be the ability to respond to incidents in Detroit Lakes that we don't currently have because of the officer training and the equipment that they would have access to. Other benefits is that it just really builds a strong officer with strong leadership tendencies. I mentioned to Wendy yesterday that when I worked in Clay County, you could look around the metro agencies in Farden Moorhead, nearly everybody in leadership roles was somebody that was on Redwood Valley SWAT. So I think it has a lot of good attributes, yes, there is some costs, and yes, there is some commitments, but I decided to further look into it for those reasons, and sought Charlie Ramstead's help, and we received a joint powers agreement from the existing team. Charlie examined that and found that it doesn't fully address the concerns that he has, and Charlie doesn't want to author agreements that the city's not willing to take the next steps toward. So I really sought to seek from the council, is this something you want me to pursue? And if so, then I'll work with Mr. Ramstead to get that joint powers agreement up to a satisfactory level for him, and we look at placing two officers on the team. Any questions?
I know there was no action taken, but is any questions for chief?
You know, what can you tell me about the use cases in need for our community? What's the deficit and the problem?
Well, I can tell you in all honesty that since I've been the chief here, and I've been here for over six years, I haven't called in a SWAT team to respond to an incident. That doesn't mean what's going to happen tomorrow. I served on SWAT for over six years in the Farden Moorhead area, and we averaged 25 missions per year when I was on the team. Granted, that was back in the methamphetamine bust days. But you're always one step away from having something happen, and my job was preparation and making sure our personnel are prepared to respond to worst-case scenarios. And I would definitely tell you that I would feel better about our response capability if we had access to a SWAT team versus not having access to one.
What would, what would you do today, if there was no SWAT teams, what would you do today if there was a need?
So we would handle it with our existing personnel, patrol and detectives, and we'd have assistance from deputy sheriffs and troopers. I would feel that our officers and the other responding personnel don't have the equipment that they would have had had they been on a SWAT team. That would, that would consist largely of levels of armor protection and different weapons platforms and vehicles that can be used to safely transport people in what's called a hot zone. So we'd be short on all those, and the most important one is the training. SWAT officers do training at least once a month on tactics, once a month on shooting, so they're confident, capable of working as a team, and they understand the role that law enforcement is going to take in different situations, and how to position themselves, and how to work effectively with other personnel.
What kind of costs would, do you think that this would be for the city?
Well, I can tell you the minimum cost, because everything to do with this costs probably double what you think it's going to. To be a member of the team is $500 a year, that's the annual membership fee. And then they've informed me that today, to purchase equipment for one officer is about $3,500 per officer, so if we put two on, it would be $7,000. There will be more that we're not thinking of. You're going to have increased ammo expenditure because of all the shooting training that they do, you're probably going to need to buy some new weapons platforms. I'm confident that the number's going to be higher than that. But I do have some funding sources that I can use that are mutually neutral, as far as you're concerned, to make those things happen.
But Chief Todd, didn't you make a comment yesterday that if you needed SWAT services here, you would be called in from Clay County and Otter Tail County, and then we're responsible for those costs?
Yes, so if we, there's three teams we could call. We could call this Hubbard/Wadena, it's called Lakes Area SWAT, Becker will be a part of it now that we've already signed on. We could call the Redwood Valley Team out of Farden Moorhead, we could call Otter Tail. If they responded, we'd be responsible for all the costs of their response.
So we do have services available if we need it currently?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, just, go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry. Yeah, just, go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry.
What is our commitment to the, because we're part of this group, what is the commitment that we send our two officers to Wadena County or Hubbard County? What does that commitment look like?
Yeah, it's a good question. So how the organization works is that if you, if you send your officers on a call-out, me, Detroit Lakes pays my own officers, even if they go on a call-out in another jurisdiction, Wadena, Hubbard. So any, any call-out that is within the jurisdiction of the teams that exist, each member pays their own employees overtime. Conversely, if we had a large call-out in Detroit Lakes and our SWAT team responded to it, this Lakes Area SWAT, I would pay my own officers that responded. Hubbard County would pay their deputies that responded. Park Rapids would pay their officer that responded. Does that answer the question?
Yep. And then the follow-up to that is, so chain command then, once they're on a SWAT call, they're under the jurisdiction of the SWAT joint powers rather than our place, do you correct?
That's not necessarily true. So for how it's supposed to work, and Charlie and I need to work through some of, some of the language in the JPA, and they also have a team policy, but the most accepted practice and how I would expect it to work, and if it didn't work that way now, I would fight for it to work, is that the agency head of the jurisdiction where the incident is happening retains incident command responsibilities. The SWAT team commander retains command for specific tactical decisions, and are we capable of this or are we not? But he would have to fall under the jurisdiction of the agency head in that jurisdiction.
What about the individual members? So like, we have members of the SWAT team, they become part of that SWAT team, report to the SWAT team later, with them reporting to the incident commander, essentially?
Yep, yes, sir.
Any other comments or suggestions? Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was just, there's no action needed, other than have Chief work with Mr. Ramstead, you can just draft that.
Exactly, that's what I understand.
Okay.
I have a meeting with Sheriff Glaner on Thursday evening after the trial, so get together with Sheriff.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Item C is consideration to a level from the finance officer approving the purchase of a containment fill station for the fire department, and this, I believe, is replacing a 1994 cascade air compressor. The memo is in everyone's pockets. Chief Swanson is here to maybe share a little more information.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so we've wrote three grants over the past few years to replace this air breathing apparatus filling station. We've been denied every try, and, you know, as we were going about this, Heidi set aside some ARPA dollars for this. The grant we were working on was going to be purchasing a power unit out of Alex Air, and installation in cost was around $60,000. So that's how she set our portion of the funds from the townships. When we were doing our, we have to do, be trained every so many years on filling our compressed air cylinders to make sure that we know how to inspect them, just in case they were to have an issue. So we were doing that training, we were being trained by Gary Thompson from Tri-State Diving, he is a certified trainer on that, and he reached out to us and said, well, I sell this brand. So we took a look at it, and it is a brand that other fire companies do sell. I did not, was not aware that Gary sold those. And he shot us a price that, it couldn't be beat. I had another vendor today stop at the shop and wanted to give me a, hey, you're going to get one, can I give you a, give you a price? And I said, well, can you beat this price? He goes, I'm not even a bid on that. So Gary, being a local, has really given us a really good deal on it, install stuff like that. So with that, our current unit is a 91 to 94, and, you know, it was, we had it before the fire station additional stuff. It's kind of how we're placing it. It's right now, the bottom end's going out of it. Every time we use it, we're dumping the oil on it because there's metal in the oil. The filling station side of it, the air tanks are open, they're supposed to be in a lock chamber in case they were to blow up. So it doesn't meet OSHA, it doesn't meet NMPA compliance, you know, those are the reasons we were writing grants for. We were then denied, 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 and so, you know, we reached out to Heidi, and we got to move forward with it, so. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
Thank you.
So the committee discussed this yesterday at our meeting, and I would, at this time, move to authorize the purchase of the containment filling station, fill station.
First and second, for a consideration to approve a fancy air compressor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, item D is a consideration to a resolution accepting a donation of $3,300 from BTD for safety harnesses for the fire department. The chief was at the meeting last night and explained to us, these are harnesses that the firemen use that attaches to the ladder, correct?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's pretty quick. Yeah, come on with that.
So right now, when we're on a fire scene, we are exempt from fall standards because it is an emergency situation. When we were having a call at BTD one time, they're like, how do you get lifted? Well, we do, but it's not best practice. So they came up and they offered to purchase three sets of this stuff, so this would be 50-foot self-retracting fall devices and harnesses for three members. So these, this could be attached to any, you know, metal structure on a building, a grain bin, something of that, or our ladder truck, so if we're doing roof ventilation, stuff like that. So that way, if the firefighter were to fall, that self-contained or self-retracting device would lock up, and then we, you know, they won't fall to the ground. Right now, we're crossing our fingers and trying to do our best practices of standing on ladders or doing other devices, but, you know, so it's a, it's a, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
So again, we reviewed this at our committee meeting, and I, we would move to approve the donation.
We've got a first and second. A table to accept the $3,300 donation from BTD. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item B, consideration to approving an equipment transfer from the police department to the fire department. There is a memo in the packet that includes, this is a 2018 Ford police interceptor from the fire, from the police department to the fire department for use by the fire, full-time fire chief. Would either Chief, Fire Chief or Police Chief like to expand on any of that?
I think we're good. I think you nailed it.
Okay, all right, I'll get better. I would so move.
Second. First and second, consideration of approving an equipment transfer of a vehicle from the PD to the fire department. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and lastly, I would, item 11A, which we moved to the consent, A2, which we moved from the consent agenda to the general agenda, and I would ask Kelsey.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and Council, so there is two massage therapist applications, I'd want to clarify, really the one that we wanted to pull is just the Amanda Knudsen application, and staff recommends the denial of that application due to failing the background check. Staff believes that the felony conditions on the applicant's record disqualifies her from a license and poses a public safety concern.
So our committee discussed this yesterday, and our motion today is to deny the license.
Do we have a second? Motion a second to deny Amanda Knudsen's massage therapist license. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Wendy?
Since we, since we exempted 11A2, do we need to have a motion to actually approve Susan's?
Sure.
All right, so move.
First and second to approve Susan Hiddon's massage therapist license. All in favor?
Aye.
Catch? Missed that one? All right, moving down to 9A Liquor Gambling, Aaron?
All right. 9A, consideration to a temporary expansion permit from American Legion from February 11th through 26th. Looks like we've heard a grandfather from men. We unanimously approved it. Kelsey, you want to say what they're going to do with this?
Basically, it's over Polar Fest, of course, Polar Fest started this last weekend. They wanted basically to do a barbecue on the south side of their building.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion a second to consideration a temporary expansion permit from American Legion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, 9B, consideration to a temporary liquor license for the Boys and Girls Club on February 25th, 2023, out of Detroit Lakes near City Beach for their Polar Punch. We all unanimously agreed on it. Spread on that, everybody kind of knows what that is, right? I motion.
Make motion?
Second.
Second, Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I had one more thing that was added to the agenda. It is a permit from the VFW to have a gambling application license for the Boys and Girls Club on March 18th. We unanimously agreed on this also, so I move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jackie, all in favor of approving the Boys and Girls Club raffle?
Aye.
Thank you.
And one more thing, Randy's looking for some employees over at the liquor store. You go in there, everybody's always happy, so if you want some part-time job or some extra income, go ask your man. That's all I got.
Perfect. Thank you, Aaron. Moving now to public utilities, is that Mr. Sterns?
Yes, I have for consideration to approving the WAPA REC Designated Entity Agreement. Public Utilities is anything but, short on an acronym, so we met this morning, and that is, the Public Utilities recommends approval of the, where Western Area Power Administration will send renewable energy credits to the Missouri River Energy Services where the, where MRES will manage those credits on behalf of Detroit Lakes Public Utilities. If you have any questions, for now, we'll be holding answers, and I recommend approval and move for approval.
Okay, motion, do we have a second? Sorry, second. Any discussion or questions for either Mr. Sterns or Mr. Roberts? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 11 is all in the consent agenda. Item 12, the mayor's agenda, which we're going to do our best at this one. Item A is a consideration point of food pantry to fulfill the term of resident, resigned member Jamie Marks Erickson, which expires September 30th, 2024. Mayor's going to address that when he gets back?
Yes, to do good. You got the list of?
I do, but I don't see that one on there.
Yep, so A, B, and C defer action on A, B, and C.
Speeds that right along, thank you very much. Item 12E, consideration of the appointment of Alex Westoff to the park board. He's fulfilled one term and is eligible to be reappointed.
So move.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then defer E.
For E, thank you. 12F, consideration appointment of Greta Guck to the Arts and Culture Commission to fill seat of Ms. Sinclair, who has resigned, and her term expired at the end of the month. We have a motion to?
I so move.
First and second to bring Greta Guck onto the Arts and Culture Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration the appointment of Patty LaBarre to the Arts and Culture Commission. Ms. LaBarre served one term and is eligible for appointment.
So move.
First and second to reappoint Patty LaBarre. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration appointment of Amy Sterns to the Arts and Culture Commission. She has served one term and eligible. What is our wishes?
So move.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, aye. Consideration appointment of Helen Foltz to the Public Utilities Commission. Ms. Foltz has served one term, which expires the end of the month, is eligible to be reappointed.
So move.
First and second, consideration to bring Ms. Foltz back on to the Public Utilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That one quicker than I thought. Moving down to 13, is there anything else from city staff?
I think so.
All right, any, Mr. Drainey, or Dr. Drainey, excuse me, anything else you'd like to bring to council? Mr. Sterns?
No.
Jackie?
No.
John?
Nothing here today.
Nothing? Dan?
Aaron? All good.
All righty, a couple of, just for information, Becker County assessor's notified us, the Board of Review will meet on April 25th at 9:30 in the morning. You've got joint governments meetings in front of you, the dates, as well as the remainder of the dates for city council. If nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.